Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I'd like to call this January 18th regular meeting of Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Here. Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brimmer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
This evening, we have Carl Williamson, who is the chaplain at the CTCAs, Cancer Treatment Center of Americas, leading us in prayer. Good evening, Pastor Williamson.
Good evening, I'm Mayor McKinney and City Council members, thank you for the privilege of being able to do this. Open this time in prayer and ask you for that's my, let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for allowing this moment to come to you, to ask you to give wisdom and discernment and good health and all that's needed to do the role, the job, responsibilities of the city council and also the committee heads that have all the responsibilities to take care of them every day as well. And we thank you for what you're going to do in and through for the people, for the city of the nation. Lord, we want to also lift up those who are going through COVID right now. They either have it, they're in the hospital. We want to pray for all those that are in the hospital, those who are suffering with COVID and sickness unto death. Lord, we pray for the staff, the nurses, the doctors who are serving them, and many other people to make that possible. And so we thank you for them, keep them healthy as well, we need them. Lord, we pray for the men and women, the teens who are pregnant and they need resources, they need help, and they need to learn how to raise a child, that precious child which dwells in the womb of that dear mother and that was created in her womb. And we just thank you for knowing that you have resources, not only in the city, but you have resources like family, the Family Resource Center, you have the churches that dwell, many churches in Zion that can help those who have no resources and they need it desperately. So please, lead the city, the churches, the people, the families to help these young teens and mothers, men and women who find themselves with child and need help. So please help us to know that and to help them when we do know the need. And I pray for men and women to stand up in this city and this county, to stand up as Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. did, and he, as a pastor, imparted his life for justice, for doing the right thing with conscience and serving and helping other people that we might be treated equally. And we pray that we would be the same way. So please, rise up, men and women, to be like him and others who gave their lives for justice. And we ask it in Jesus Christ's name. I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Item number four, are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Frierson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five, citizens' comments. Mary Lou Hildebrandt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The month of December, your S.A. volunteers gave over 91 hours to the citizens of Zion for a value to the city of over $2,618. We assisted the police department with accidents and coiser deaths. We assisted the fire department with the fire at the Hoover Apartments and conducted the monthly siren test. We assisted the public works department with traffic for a tree down and left cones to keep the public safe. We assisted at the food pantry at the Park District and provided traffic and lighting for Santa during the Trail of Lights. Members attended training sessions in order to keep current on the latest information. We did various maintenance tasks at the S.A. center for our equipment and yearly updates and reports as well as upkeep on the center and the bay. With the donation from Humanities First, we were able to reward our volunteers with a holiday dinner to show recognition and appreciation for their time and efforts during 2021. We are working on a stream by application process for membership to our unit. Additional volunteers are always needed and appreciated. We provide uniforms and training. If you are interested, watch the city website for this application update. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our city.
Thank you for serving our city. Thank you, Mary Lou.
(inaudible).
Good.
As you can see on there, it says tax increase. Okay, so somehow, community, Cypress Park's mentor to the city officials, and came up with a solution. The city will sign special committee to maintain the common areas. These will be given to the city from the residents within the Cypress Park and the cost. The service will be added to an annual property tax not to exceed the exact cost of service. Okay, so apparently somebody has met the city's officials. So the board would like to invite that committee, who was in charge of the committee, to meet January 31st at the, at Design Park, just at $2,400 reward. So I'm on the board, and so I didn't meet with anybody from the city, and nobody on the board has met with the city. So we're not able to meet these people who came up with this genius plan of increasing the taxes. All members of Cypress Park get notified by email as a meeting. They get a letter to mail. And this is a go to meeting. It's an app. You're on your phone, or you face on your computer, or face on your phone. So we'd like to invite your people to come to the meeting. You think that's possible?
At what time is that meeting? We will, as always, look at our schedules and see if we're available on the 31st and investigate that. We'll discuss your-
I might give them this way, it won't be that blindsided, you know, make sure that the person who's good at Google, he can do so, so we'll see if that will be happening.
Okay, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Sean Davis?
(inaudible) and I'm confident we have too many shares and concerns. On that 3242 Sherrill Road, directly across the street from me, at 3235 Sherrill Road, there's a building there at, there's, there's some work in there. And I have associated with Pete, I'm not ashamed, it's another gaming cafe. And from what I remember, companies will help, who would not have any more gaming cafes. Just curious to find out if that's true, whether it would be a restaurant. And I don't know if there's any kind of planning place to find out. It's a whole new calendar for being a restaurant first. Maybe a year to be a restaurant without a license before we give them a license so they can go into video game. But that's pretty much what is happening in that building. If you haven't seen it, take a look, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about if you understand the gaming aspect of it. Second concern is the lights. On 31st Street, from 31st to 33rd, on Sherrill Road, there's like seven lights that are out. I know we made the last comment, come out and put those lights in. They put in new lights all the way down, Sherrill Road looks great. But right when you get to 31st Street heading south, there's like seven lights out there. They've been out for over five years, I've watched it. You know when it's dark, the lights just come out. So just want you to know, we'd like to have that pink ribbon good, please.
Okay.
That was it.
All right, thank you. Kathy Champagne?
I'd like to talk about mask mandates. The city has a mask mandate, I'd like to see it enforced. So due to the reasons, we're approaching 850,000 deaths in this country from COVID. Hospitals are at capacity, but they're turning people away. They're turning people away with emergency health crises. Omicron this year is highly dangerous, although apparently not as deadly as the other forms. And we hope prevent the spread of the virus by wearing masks, social distancing, and being vaccinated. And as you can see from what's going on economically in this country, our supply chain is still Our township supervisor has COVID now, as I learned last hour, and they're working remotely. It's impacting everybody, and the only way we're going to stop is to comply with the rules, wear masks, keep social distance. And one thing I haven't heard anybody talk about with this virus, nobody's asked, what would Jesus say? Jesus lived in a community where they put the welfare of the community over the individual desires and wants. Jesus would say, put the damn mask on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Item number six, consent agenda?
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on December 21st, 1st, 2021 at 7:00
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Holmes?
Second.
Second by Frierson. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bills, vouchers 139508 through 139762 drawn on Huntington National Bank.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion authorization approval, 7A, consider zoning docket 22-z1 in ordinance requesting a special use permit to operate a daycare located at Grace Missionary Church at 1415 27th Street per Director Iyansen. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Your Honor. Please stand the daycare and learning center requesting special use permit to operate daycare located at Grace Missionary Church at 1415 27th Street. At the current location, the daycare for 15 children had nine staff members. At the proposed location, with the additional square footage, the home will potentially increase to 100 square meters and 13 staff members. Ground hall pickup will be located in the park lot on the south side of the building. Building Fire Department suspects the proposed site found new issues for daycare use of this location. The dinner and fix point should be planned in front of the mission meeting. We recommend to approve this request.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Holmes, second by Frierson. Questions, comments?
Yeah, Commissioner, Director Iyansen, I have a question. Is my memory correct, isn't this like, isn't this the second daycare center or school that's been approved for this location?
Yes, there was an alternate school there which moved out last year.
Okay. Then my memory is correct. Okay, thank you.
Did we already approve a previous special use for this? Did that expire for the other applicant?
We didn't approve for this location.
Okay.
That was a different location.
Got it.
Where are they currently located?
In Beach Park, I don't know the exact, I think I shared it over at Beach Park.
Any additional questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7B, consider zoning docket 22-z2 in ordinance requesting a variance to section 152-3A of the Zion Municipal Code to increase the height of the accessory building located at 2111 Gilead Avenue per Director Iyansen. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Judge. Michael Fisher, please, we request an variance to section 152-3A of the Zion Municipal Code to increase the height of the accessory building. When applying the permit, the specifications that they will provide are shown at a height of 15 feet, not taking them to a town hall platform in a building with its cash flow. During construction, at the form of concrete slab and electric grid on the platform, we realized that the height would be 17 feet, exceeding heights of the principal buildings I've visited. As soon as homeowners realize the discrepancy, they can't take it to the building. If the payment is 22, the zoning commission may need to request approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7C, consider request to extend battalion chief's stipend per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So last summer, council approved adding a battalion chief's stipend due to multiple vacancies across our department and the increased overtime load on the other firefighters and lieutenants. That approval included an end date of October 1st. With the recent increase in COVID cases, some battalion chiefs are again willing to work some extra shifts, even though historically no provision has been available to have these exempted management personnel receive compensation for working above and beyond their normal hours. Requesting approval for $1,000 stipend for 24-hour shifts, $500 for a 12-hour halfship, which will potentially decrease the overtime burden currently faced by our lieutenants and firefighters. Due to the unknown future of the current pandemic and potential variance, I am requesting and recommending that this stipend remain in place indefinitely or until otherwise directed by City Council and/or Zion Fire Department and City Administration. Also, on a side note, knock on wood, we are back to full strength. So this is more of a proactive step taken just in case something happens down the road. Hopefully it doesn't, but just in case, we'd like this provision in place if we happen to need it again.
All right, thank you, Chief Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7D, consider request to adjust minimum wage from employees in the police department per Chief Barner.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Pursuant to the change of Illinois compiled statute 820 ILCS 105/4 minimum wage law effective January 1st of 2022, anyone over the age of 18 years old will now have to be paid no less than $12 hourly. I respectfully request that employees under my command be appropriately adjusted and retropayment back to January 1st, 2022 be made if applicable.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 7E, consider approval of non-binding letter of intent regarding the development of certain parcels of property in the Brighton, Brighton Pond subdivision per Administrator Nable.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to try and summarize a issue with a long history, and it's very complicated here, but for those of you familiar with Brighton Ponds over on Conotion North of 173, there was a development that was going to go into place there, probably the mid to late 70s. Yeah. Never happened, it fell through. However, the infrastructure that was put in place there was primarily for a mobile home, our four-inch lines, water mains, sanitary, things kind of fitting that. After that, some houses were built in that area. We basically came in and said, stop, can't go forward. This isn't laid out for that. It's not what this was approved for, the infrastructure isn't there. We went through process, got a judicial order to basically say, can't go any further, can't develop anymore until infrastructure's addressed. And that's where it sat for quite a long time. It's all, all the streets in there, all the driveway, all the infrastructure in there is basically privately owned. It was supposed to be under an HOA for maintenance and upkeep. Those, I think they went through multiple HOAs, but they basically went defunct, and it's just been sitting there. While not a, ultimately a responsibility of the city, it is something that needs to be addressed. We had a developer come in, Rock Lake LLC, that acquired a majority of the vacant parcels on the northern part of Brighton Ponds, and said, hey, we'd like to develop these. And we told them, well, we'd love to have you develop those, but you need to address the infrastructure of the entire area if that's the case, because it all needs to be brought up to code and updated for that kind of development. So after a lot of discussions back and forth on how we could make that happen, they were very cooperative and very patient, we came up with an idea of a townhome model. They're proposing 174 townhome units. Obviously, this is all very preliminary, this is a non-binding letter of intent, I'm just giving you the background on it. And they want to develop that, which, but they are asking the city if we would consider the creation of a residential TIF in that area, similar to what we did with Crane Metals Woodstone, where we would use those taxes, that tax increment, to basically cover the cost of the upgrade of the infrastructure. So the development of those, those properties, those new units, would, I would anticipate to be about $750,000 a year in property taxes for all of those, which would more than cover over the life of the TIF, the cost of the infrastructure. What we have in the LOI is 4 million, a not to exceed $4 million amount. We don't know exactly the extent or exactly the level of work that needs to happen to develop the infrastructure there. We're thinking maybe in the $2.5 to $3 million range, but between not knowing exactly what's in the ground over there, how it's all going to be maintained, and currently what the costs of materials, and as Ms. Champagne alluded to, supply chain, if we can have it with our prices and availability, we put a not to exceed of $4 million in there. Ultimately, Rock Lake is going to be responsible for creating the planned unit development, the PUD, the proposals, the, all the surveys, all the construction, the drawing, the engineering, everything. They'll have to come back to us for us to actually go into a binding agreement to agree to whatever their plans are. However, before they start doing outlay of moving forward with all of that, they are basically looking for us to just approve the concept that we would fund the infrastructure with a residential TIF agreement to be able to move forward. This has been a long time issue for the residents that are there. It would be a long time continuing issue if we didn't address it somehow, and I think this is our best avenue moving forward. Rock Lake is proposing that after the development, they incorporate the whole area into an HOA to continue to maintain the plowing and maintenance of the streets. We would be responsible for the, I believe, under the DNR, IDNR, for the water mains, the maintenance, if there were breaks and things of that nature, but that would all be spelled out in a future agreement. So I would propose that we enter into this LOI with Rock Lake so that we can start moving forward with plans to address this.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this letter of intent.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Are there questions, comments?
Just a couple of comments. So Zion is like renowned for its parks and green space. I don't know if we've gotten to that point in the conversation yet, but that is a concern when I'm looking at the layout here is, everything seems very tight and densely populated, and I'd like to make sure that there's some space for, you know, parks. I'm not sure if these layouts or the models that they present are going to have garages, because parking would also be a concern over there, even after they widen the streets. But other than that, I mean, I like the idea of expanding our base here and cleaning that up so the residents over there can get the type of services that they deserve.
Yeah, just the only comment I have about that, I think we've talked for quite a while, and we know this has been in the works, that there is a little variety in our homes here. We have a lot of older homes that were built early on in the 1900s, 1940s, and so having a different model of townhouse might even suit more of the families that are transitioning in design as well. And I'm sure that question will be addressed with the developer, and I'm sure they had garages included as part of that for parking. That would only, that would only make sense, but we'll continue to flesh that out. Any other further questions or comments?
No, I would just add that this is, this is a long-term problem that there didn't seem to be a resolution for, and hopefully we'll be able to work with this developer to solve this problem that's been outstanding for going on almost 20 years now. And in conjunction with the special service area that we set up, what was that, two months ago, that will be going into effect over the next year or so. So hopefully, the residents there will get some relief, especially when it comes to issues like street maintenance and plowing, which currently they, they don't have, so, because it's all private streets. Thank you very much for your hard work on this, David.
And all the staff involved, too.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes? Aye. Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7F, consider telephone line conversion and installation as recommended by Granite for Administrator Nable.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. A little while ago, we moved our television, or television, telephone services over to Granite, and we got a better rate with them overall, because they were able to basically get wholesale rates from AT&amp;T, pass on some of that savings to us. So they kind of bundled all of our lines together that they can convert over for some savings. However, when we were going through individual lines on some of the bills, we saw that while overall we were saving, there were spikes in some of the individual services, primarily our fax lines that we'd have throughout the city, some of our alarms and circuit lines. So we approached them and said, hey, you're charging, you know, we're saving, but you're charging more than what we were paying with AT&amp;T on these lines. Is there something we could do? And they said, well, a lot of that stuff's pre-antiquated, analog lines, fax lines, things of that nature. We do have this solution called EPIC, E.P.I.K., that basically takes a lot of those analog lines and puts it to a wireless router-type system, so that it's not hardwired lines for maintenance and everything. So kind of a more modern solution. So we said, well, can we get a quote on that compared to where we're at? And as you can see on the last page of what you have there, they took the telephone lines and the equipment that we were paying them, and gave us a quote, and if, under this solution, it's projected that we would have about $27,000 a year in savings by going with this over what we currently have. That's currently what we have with Granite, a $27,000 a year savings, but even if we were with AT&amp;T, these rates are $17,000 a year savings over what we were paying with AT&amp;T. So savings over our current service, pretty significant. I would recommend that we will, we approve the EPIC solution with Granite and Granite Forest.
All right, is there a motion to consider telephone line conversion and installation?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Frierson, second by Holmes. Questions or comments? Administrator, did you say there's going to be television in there, too?
No, no. I think I binged too much Netflix over this weekend, but that was on the break.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, no, no television in your office, sorry.
I believe we have snow coming in on Saturday. The last storm we had, we had some issues with some vehicles and drivers. I just ask for the citizens to pay attention to the plow trucks, please stay back from them. They are out there trying to do the job, and they're trying to keep their head on the pillow, but they can't over here.
All right, thank you, Director Roberts. Administrator Nable?
Starting this way this time. Piggybacking on that with snow, please be aware of the restrictions on overnight parking, makes it very difficult for our plow trucks and emergency service vehicles when they can't clear streets because cars are parked overnight in the streets, but I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the, some courtesy to our, to our employees. We've had recently, I think people, just because of the, of the pandemic and just things that are going on across the board, everyone's patience is a little frayed and tempers are a little short, and we've seen some of that translate into interactions, whether it be by phone or in person with city staff across the board. And I just ask that individuals continue to remain patient with staff, that they treat them respectfully. We're trying to continue to provide services during the course of the pandemic. We actually had a individual whose, I understand it's a tough situation, but water was shut off. We said, okay, you know, we can take payment stuff, and they said, well, I have COVID, blah, 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 I'll come down there, and we said, please do not come down here and interact with our, with our staff while we have that. We made arrangements to get that paid, and they said, I want to be in, I'm going to come back tomorrow, I'm going to keep coming back, and just, just sheerly out of spite to, to threaten, or, or just out of frustration, and that puts stress on our employees that are, are already handling a difficult situation. So we try to treat everyone with respect, we just ask the same. We understand that, that it's some tough times right now financially, personally, physically, and we just ask that everyone remember that we're here to try and help and serve the public as much as possible, and we just ask for respect from them as well during this time, and that we just all do the right thing by each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Nable, also for those that are, that are listening. We understand as a result of COVID that the mental health issues in our, our country have increased, and here in Lake County, if there, if you, you or your, any of your teenagers, anyone in your family is having mental health issues as a result of this, it's been sky high in teens, we've seen some of the repercussions of that in the school system, don't hesitate to call two-one-one, whether you're in need of mental health, whether you're in need of financial assistance, rental assistance, the United Way has that health, that's, that line set up for citizens in Lake County to be able to call if they're having any kind of issues. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor. Again, just a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Piggybacking on the snow, it's a two inch minimum, so if we're expected to get two inches of snow, I understand your cars are going to get citations. Just a reminder for no parking on city streets from two to six A M. every, every night. If you need to call a car in on a non-snow night, you can call eight seven two eight thousand, put it on our dispatch list. I wanted to thank Mary Lou and her team for, as the service throughout the years. She's been helpful to us and, and the Fire Department for sure. We've had a couple incidents recent, in recent months where we've utilized them, and, and they've come out, no questions asked, and actually asked us what we needed, so very helpful team, thank you to them. And then two last things, as we start the new year, I just wanted to remind everybody that if you see something, say something. You can call anonymously, eight four seven six six two, twenty-two twenty-two, that's Crime Stoppers. They just want your information, they'll forward that information on to us, and we'll, we'll act on it from there. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to my team. Lieutenant Curly is actually present. We had a big push on trying to get some new police officers hired. We, we had a lot of struggles with that, we got, we got through that, and we had a meet a deadline, and I'm happy that we were able to fill those two spots in the academy. So in a couple of months, when those folks are out of the academy, you'll see them out on the road, stop them, say hi, introduce yourself, and have them introduce themselves to you.
Chief, again, could you explain or push out on your, your website about the, how the city has, the police department has placed the city in four districts now, and residents in those districts, if they have an issue in their district, they're able to reach out to a sergeant on patrol at that time to be able to handle any neighborhood issues?
Absolutely, just as a reminder to Mayor's point, we, we have divided our city into four districts, we've assigned officers to those districts permanently, and then also sergeants to those districts permanently. Those sergeants have contact information on our Facebook page and the city website as well. You're welcome to email them at any point, they will follow up with you and deal with your issue. That's for non-emergency issues. Again, always if you have an emergency, call nine-one-one, we'll definitely respond. But if you have, if you have a nuisance or an ongoing problem that's a non-emergent, please just drop a line, email to that sergeant, and they will follow up with you and get somebody on it.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Street?
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Just one reminder tonight, there's been some high-profile multi-fatality fires in different areas of the country recently, including Kenosha last night, not too far from us. Lost, I believe, three as a result of a fire. Just can't underscore the importance of smoke alarms and talking with your families about exit plans and being ready with that plan that you hopefully never need, but the one time in your life that you might need it, we just ask that you're, that you're ready to, to get out quickly. But most importantly, we need those smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms operational in your homes and apartments. That's the main safety reminder for tonight.
Chief, how often should those smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms be tested or changed in a home?
Sure, the, the rule is, um, is when you change the clocks, you change your batteries. Now, a lot of the newer technology has sealed batteries, so you don't always need to. Usually, they say those are good for ten years. I would err on the caution of safety and replace those every five to seven years. But if you have the older style, that still take a battery, plan on checking and changing those batteries every time you change a clock in the spring and fall.
Is it my understanding, Director Ianson, that the building department hands out smoke detectors when they go on inspections as well?
How, when they're available, we actually have some CO detectors that actually came from the Fire Department. Currently, we don't have these stuff in the building department.
Okay, so our, our Fire Department and our building department are working in concert when they are in supply to be able to give out the smoke detectors? So if anyone needs one, of, of course, those are crucial to health. And Chief Street, my last question, is there a, kind of an escape plan that you can put up on your notice on the fire website for people to be able to look at that and discuss the ways of exiting your homes safely in case of an emergency?
Absolutely, there's some sections on our website, both with those plans, but also links to other resources, United States Fire Administration, that type of thing, that have excellent, quick, easy to understand little programs that'll help our residents out.
Oh, I do have one more question. Sounded like an interesting, sounded like our, our landfill siting meeting. Lithium batteries, I've had several questions about how to properly dispose of lithium batteries, and where can they be disposed of and how? Anyway.
I don't have the answer, but I believe Swalco does. Swalco.org deals with disposal of, of batteries and paints and many different hazards and materials. I would urge visit to Swalco, S W A L C O dot org for direction on those types of things.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, do you have any commentary?
Nothing tonight.
No, I'm not going to hear.
All right.
I want to thank Chief Street. The recent garage fire was directly across the street from my house, and the chief was kind enough to indulge me while I kind of watched operations and kind of explained the process of how a fire is attacked and dealt with, and crews rotated in and out, so I appreciate you taking the time. So thank you very much.
Glad we were able to keep you informed.
Commissioner Holmes?
Nothing, sir.
Lieutenant Curly, I forgot, do you have any, any comments you'd like to make, or you just want to, you're like the mouse in the corner? All right. Item number nine is announcements, February first at seven P M. We have a Zion City Council meeting, and February fifteenth at six P M. Zion Township Board Meeting, and at seven P M. on the fifteenth, we have another Zion City Council meeting. Item number ten, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Frierson, second by Holmes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye, motion carries. Everybody have a great evening, drive home safely, and watch the ice.